I'll do the official. We'd like to welcome everyone out to City Council. It's been awhile since we've met. On this November 14th, 2017. All council members are present. The mayor should be with us shortly. I'm crossing my fingers for him to come. Pledge of allegiance will be given by Tamara O'Brien and our opening remarks by Lynn Walker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather together tonight to go over the needs of the city, we're grateful. We would ask thee to be with us, Father. Listen carefully and approach.
Amen.
Okay. Approval of tonight's meeting on agenda. Scott, Tina, is there any changes?
Just as noted on the agenda, 9C has been continued and 10B and 10C will both be continued. Those are both being continued to December 5th.
You said 10B and C?
10B and C and 9C.
9C doesn't have a date on it, so is that just indefinite?
Indefinitely right now.
Alright, so do we have a motion for tonight's agenda?
We made the motion that we approve tonight's agenda with items 9C and 10A and 10B. No, I'm sorry, 10B and 10C taken off the agenda.
So, motion by Sid and a second by Lynn. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've come to the part of open session. This is for those items that are not on the agenda. You know there are some items that are called public hearings. We also think you could keep those remarks to those agenda items, but we encourage you, if you have any items you'd like to discuss, to come up for open session at this time. And you just have to state your name now.
Lori Williams. Since there's an agenda item to discuss Phase 2 of the bike trail, and it's not a public hearing, I'd like to make some comments and ask some questions. So I want to finish before answering, before you guys answer my questions, because I want to make use of my time. Wendy Morgan shared her grandma request that she received with me today, and I'm curious why the meeting between Sid, Dionne, and Jason Calley was not included in that request. It took place on October 11th in the police department basement, and several relevant things were discussed. I happened to be in the building at the same time and heard a great deal of the conversation. Which brings up another point. There is also a discussion about records and record-keeping tonight. There's a large donation for the bike trail that was anonymous, and it looks like possibly people in the city know who the donor was that made it. This makes it highly improper and dangerously easy for future expectations of special treatment and favors. The public deserves to know the motivations behind it, and it is in the best interest of transparency to disclose it instead of hiding it. The long-term maintenance does impact taxpayer dollars, and whenever a council member and/or a city employee have a meeting that impacts taxpayer funds, shouldn't there be at a minimum a record of the meeting? For the sake of transparency at least, between the city and the citizens it serves. And my final question is, I did a grandma, well, two more questions. I did a grandma of Phase 1 of the mountain bike trail, and all the employee hours that were used to work on the trail were not calculated in the total amount of the cost. By my estimation, that would bring the total cost of the Phase 1 well over $300,000. Why were the employee hours not accurately accounted for, and since they were on the trail several days a week, working for months, I find it ironic that repeatedly it's stated by the city that they don't have enough employees to do all that's required, and yet a crew can work on a special interest project with so many unaccounted-for in-kind services. During Phase 2, will employees be accurately accounted for, and will the city be receiving matching grants for the donations so we do not have to use as many impact fees? I'm ready for your answers.
So we have to take a note, Scott and Tina, do you want to address those offline?
No, I'd like it in the public.
So this is open session. We can respect other people's opportunity to come up and speak. We've noted those questions down. After other people have had the opportunity to speak, then we'll ask them to address some of those.
Do you address any of these questions for me? The first one is, what about the meeting between Sid?
So run in the meeting.
Thank you. So we'll let others come up and have the opportunity to open session later, and then we'll have them discuss those.
So you're not going to address it in the public? You're going to address it offline?
We'll discuss right after open session. I'll have those two individuals.
Okay, thank you.
We also do have a short, I think Dionne, it is a discussion tonight. It's not a public hearing, it's just a discussion on the items, so just that people can please take note of that. Okay, anyone else for open session?
My name's Andy Waite, and I'd like to publicly come and thank the council and the mayor for hearing me talk about the property at 100 East, 65 North, and publicly thank the council and thank the mayor for directing staff to take care of the issues that we brought forward, and I'd like to publicly thank staff and all those who volunteered to help and make it right. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. The mayor is in the house, we'll turn the timer to him.
I apologize for being late. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the open session?
Emily Varney, 1756 North, 390 West. I'm just curious about what all these grandma requests are costing the city. Is there any way that the public could have that information so that we would know what kind of financial impact that's causing? Just curious. Thanks.
Sure. Who can take that one, Scott?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. We'd have to research.
But I'm asking who could, who could take that and research it?
Oh, Kathy. Kathy, I mean, we keep a list of what the cost is.
Okay.
Or at least what we're paid for and what our time is, as hours are concerned, but...
I'd have to wait till I can do that for you.
Go ahead, Tina.
Well, I was just going to respond and say, it would be very difficult to calculate the total cost, because grandma only allows us to charge for the least amount of hourly wage that a person is qualified to fulfill it. So for example, my time, Scott's time, Denise's time is not billed out at an hourly rate. I think we go at, we're at $1,250 now, I believe, an hour. And so to calculate those costs accurately would be very difficult.
Anyone else for the open session? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the open session and come back up here. We have a number of items on the consent. Want to do it now? Okay. So we're supposed to discuss a question that came up during open session?
Yes.
Four questions?
Yeah, there was, so I'm going to let Tina talk about meetings, or if we have individual council members meeting with staff or the public, and how that's viewed, and whether that's an official meeting, or whether there needs to be a record. So I'll let Tina answer that one.
Okay.
The question, I believe, had to do with a meeting that was held between a council member, a staff member, and a member of the public. The Open and Public Meetings Act does not define that as a meeting, so there would not be a record created that would be subject to a grandma request or a response.
Does that cover the chance meetings?
Correct.
Can you just elaborate a little bit? Because I think there's been questions from the public, and with the little limited information that's available on the definition, maybe you could just explain a little bit about chance meetings.
So the Open and Public Meetings Act defines what a meeting is, and it's any time there is a quorum of a public body present, and they are going to be discussing or making decisions on a matter of public concern, or doing the public's business. If a quorum happens to meet someplace, that is not defined as a meeting. If you meet each other in the grocery store, in the hallway at church, if you're both at a social gathering, or three of you are at a social gathering, or coming in and out of a regularly noticed, duly noticed meeting, and there's several of you out in the parking lot, as long as you're not talking about making decisions about public business, that's not defined as a meeting.
And I think, a couple of questions that came up that I read about, is, one would be if several of the members of the council got together to take a photo, for example. Could you address that?
That would also not be defined as a meeting. You're just in the same place at the same time for a photo opportunity. No public business was being conducted, I assume. I wasn't on-site, but I'm assuming no public business was being conducted. No decisions were being made. That would not be defined as a public meeting.
Okay, and then a quorum. Can you cover a quorum, given that there's a mayor and five council members?
A quorum of our legislative body is three members of the city council, or the mayor and two members of the city council.
So the mayor is included in that?
If there's two city council members with you.
Okay, I was not aware of that. That has never been explained to me before. Thank you. So, to talk about what it is, it's an organized meeting of a quorum of the city council where the purpose is to discuss city business. Okay. Were there other questions that we didn't answer?
So there's a couple of questions regarding the parks, and I'm going to do my best to remember. If you might, you might need to remind me. Okay, go ahead and give it to me again.
The first one was, is this, she answered it, said...
Lori, could you come up to the podium, please? Sorry. We just have to get it recorded. Thank you.
The first one is, I know Tina responded and said it was subject to grandma, which it was grandma. Why was the meeting, there was a meeting between Sid, Dionne, and Jason Calley, and it was not included in the grandma request?
I think you misheard me. It is not subject to grandma. That was not an open and public meeting where a record was created.
Yet the emails the day after and all of that, about that meeting, weren't included.
Because those are records that we produce pursuant to your grandma request. If minutes were not taken of that meeting, there's no record to produce pursuant to your grandma request.
There weren't any emails or anything included that talked about this meeting that was clearly a planned meeting. I mean, it was only after.
I can't answer that. I will tell you that if you have questions about the grandma request, this is not the correct forum. You're welcome to come in and ask them, or file an appeal. The city has produced everything that we believe is responsive to your request. Your public session in the open meeting part of the meeting is not the appropriate time to address that.
Tina, I can speak to the main just for a second. The reason it wasn't included, what I sent my records for the grandma request is because I had received a phone call from Jason Calley, and it was asked by Jason to meet with me, myself and Dionne. I meet regularly with residents, and with staff members, and members of the public, and with scouts on a regular basis. And so I had received a phone call asking him to meet with myself and Dionne on October 11th. That was held in the basement of City Hall for about 20 minutes.
Actually, it was about an hour.
Well, I left, so I don't know where...
True.
Okay, that's concerning to me as well, that there's a member of the public hiding, listening to us.
No, I wasn't hiding.
Well, I didn't see you.
Well, I walked by three times, looked right in.
Well, I didn't see you, and I left, and I don't know how much longer they met, but I'm telling you my account of what happened. And we did meet, a resident asked for myself and Dionne to meet with him, and I'm happy to do that anytime with any resident, and I do that on a regular basis, and I have nothing to hide. That's why I did not include in the grandma request, because it was a phone call from Mr. Calley asking us to meet.
Okay. Question two is, there's long-term maintenance, does impact taxpayers' dollars, and whenever a council member and/or a city employee has a meeting that impacts taxpayer funds, shouldn't there be at minimum a record of the meeting? You did answer that to your, what you had to say. So, question three. Were there employee hours? Why were the employee hours not accurately accounted for in Phase 1, since they were on the trail several days a week, working for months? And will it be accurately accounted for, and will the city be receiving matching grants for donation, for the donation, so we don't have to use so many impact fees?
Have we already scheduled a report from Dionne during this meeting?
Yeah.
And I think it's going to address that.
Okay. Well, what about the addressing of the, because I think the grants probably will be, but what about the addressing of all of the extra in-kind services that...
So, when I talked to him the other day, what I was told, it included some of the types of things that you're getting to. I haven't previewed his presentation, but hopefully he will be able to explain that.
I just know it said discussion, and there wasn't any open public comment, and so I wanted to bring it up.
Right. But the intent of this was to, what I asked today of Scott was, you know, when we do this particular thing, could we like make it pretty clear, this was Phase 1, this is Phase 2, what was said, what actually happened, and what's being planned?
Yeah.
So hopefully that will come out in this part of it.
Hopefully the anonymous donor, because I do think it's dangerous, and I think it's improper, because it can lead to special favors, expectations, when it's not disclosed to the public, a large...
So there's a little bit difference on this particular item. If the city doesn't know who the donor is, they don't know. That's different than knowing and not saying.
In the texts that were included in the grandma request, it does specifically say, I'll need the tax ID, 501-C3, thanks for, give them a, tell them thanks.
So there's a request for that information?
We got it today.
Okay.
So, yes.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have it right here.
And hopefully we'll cover that as well.
I'd like to see it, because it doesn't...
Thank you.
It looks like they know who it is.
We don't.
Was there a fourth?
That was, I already said it, because the second one was Tina's response. The first and second were kind of included together.
Okay, so hopefully if the report today covers what you need, great. If not, if you could schedule an appointment with Tina to go over these things.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Was there anything else we needed to cover on that item? No? Okay. I already asked this, but was there anything else spurred of interest that you wanted to talk about during the open session? If not, I'll close the open session and come back up here to the consent items, number six. We have a number of items on here. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the tonight's consent items.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We do not have any board and commission appointments tonight, and just for your information, with the election now behind us, and new council and new mayor being elected, I think on a lot of these types of things, unless there's some urgency, we're just going to allow them to take care of that in the first of the year. Okay, we have a presentation, and I think Scott, you're going to take care of this one.
Mayor and council, a couple of months ago, we did our Second Annual Finance Academy, which is inviting the general public to come and learn a little bit about city finances and how it all works. We did this last year, and had, I don't know, seven or eight last year, and this year we had, we had three, and then we also had Lori join us. And sorry, you're not going to get a certificate today. You got one last year. And so she joined us as well. But we would like to recognize the individuals that participated in the Finance Academy, and officially declare them graduates of the academy. Just to give you, and the public, you and the public, an idea of some of the things that we talk about, as far as the education on. We discuss what the general fund budget is, what enterprise funds are, what are other funds that we have, and how they work, our impact fees. We talk about how sales tax is generated. We talk about how property tax is generated. And then we also show where the money's spent. So we go over the expense side and where the money goes into individual departments. That's usually the first day. The second day, we talk about our budget process that our city council goes through, when we, when staff prepares the budget, and the input we receive from the elected officials, starting with our budget and planning retreat, all the way through the adoption of our budget. And then we have also adopted some budget guidelines as a city that we go over with them. And these are general principles that we try to hold to in order to have proper budgeting. And then the last day, we discuss a couple of policy issues that cities run into. One is incentives for businesses, what they mean, how they work. And then we also talk about debt. Should a city go into debt, and for what reasons would a city go into debt? So those are, in a nutshell, that's what the Finance Academy is. So as I call these names, with these individuals would like to come up, we can present them with the certificate. So Todd Williams. Todd, you're here. And then Pendleberries, come on up. Bring the whole family. So we have a certificate here for Randy Pendleberry. Kayla Pendleberry. And Seth is asleep, but he gets a certificate.
Really? Attendance?
He was there. He was there during session.
Or comprehension.
Now, we had a final exam, and if I remember right, I think Seth scored higher than Todd. You remember that, Todd?
Yeah, no, 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 I can't remember.
Anyway, this is a good program that we have. We generally do it around August, so we will, when we get into next year, as we look at what we're doing, we, there's an opportunity we might have to present that back and see if there's other residents interested in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is 9A, and you'll have to tell me which ones got vetoed. It's a public hearing to consider for adoption of resolution 2017-061 to update the public work standard specifications and drawings, and adopt them as the 2017 edition. Marty?
Back for me here?
Are we going to do that again?
We love doing this every time.
Okay, would anyone like to sing?
Yeah, I started to.
As it's working, so. Mayor and council, standard practice is that every couple of years, we try to do an update to the standard specifications, public work specifications and standard drawings. And this is, we did one in 2014. We skipped, we typically like to do them every two years, so last year we didn't get one updated. There were just a few minor changes. This year, we've got everything updated, and wanted to bring that before you to do that. A lot of these changes are very minor in nature, but I wanted to talk with you about the major changes. The minor ones, for example, are a detail doesn't show road base extending underneath the curb and gutter, for example. So every once in awhile, we get a contractor that says, okay, I want to put the road base only under the curb and gutter. I don't want to go three inches beyond the back of the curb and gutter, which doesn't make sense in construction practices, but they want to fight with us on its horse line. Okay, we'll get the standard drawing updated, so it shows that we can put a few more inches of road base behind the curb. Few of those are as simple as that. Many of them are very simple. But I wanted to talk today about a couple that are, I feel, fairly significant, but important for us as a city, and doing that, and one of the, we have a list of the changes, every change that was made in the standard drawings. There's a list at the beginning of the new drawings, that is in your packet, that identifies every change that was made to either a specification or to a standard drawing. And so you can look through that. If there's anything that you have a question on, we're happy to answer any question that you have with regards to those. There were two changes that I noticed that isn't in that list of significant changes that are, that were made to the drawings, but were not in that. And we will get that updated before we print any final drawing, so I need to make sure that that's included here. We updated one section, Section 1.07. It's in Division 2, called bonding requirements. At the very end of that, we changed the last paragraph to include, my mouse is the opposite here. There we go. So the last section of this is talking about seal coats with regards to development work. Crack sealing and seal coats. We feel it's very important that when we receive and accept a new pavement in a development, that we have it in a fashion that's going to not require immediate attention. And as we've been talking over the years, we've recommended that when we have a new pavement, that we try to get a seal coat on it within the first one to two years of its, of its life. And what we're recommending here, and what has been done in many other cities, is that they require that the seal coat be part of the finished pavement for the development. So essentially, when the contractor gets completed, or the developer gets completed with their development, then they have, they are required to install the seal coat.
That immediate?
That is done, so let me, let me kind of show you what we're, what we're recommending. So some cities, there's kind of two ways that it's being handled with a lot of cities. One of the cities is coming and telling developers, you have to have it done before the warranty period is up on the project. So within the one-year warranty that's allowed, they would have to have the seal coat installed. We are not recommending that, because there's a lot of hardships that's put on the city when we do that. And that mainly is, that let's say that we completed a project in the middle of October, or a developer did. He started his one-year time period, and then he didn't get his seal coat done, so there's only really three months out of the year that we recommend doing seal coats, when it's hot enough. June, July, August are your prime months. Sometimes you can sneak a little bit into September, sometime a little bit before June, but really that's your timeframe. The problem that we have in dealing with development work is that you never know when they're going to start or finish, and what, what happens, and what we've heard from other cities, really difficult to regulate that. If you tell them that we're not going to release your warranty bond until you get the seal coat on, yet it's the middle of October, they're going to say, well, you're going to have to hold that until next June for another six months before we're going to release that, which creates problems. What we've heard from other communities that do this is that it's, it's a much simpler process. If you take, so we currently have a three-year contract for seal coats. We have a great unit price for seal coats, cheaper than what most anybody, other developer could get. And rather than having them be responsible for it, they pay a cash price for the square footage of their asphalt as a bond, and then the city with their contractor will have the seal coat installed. The other thing that that does is that gives us a little bit of flexibility, that when a development, development is being constructed, typically the construction of those homes in that development happen over the next year or two. And if we're in the middle of a bunch of homes being constructed, we won't recommend to put on that seal coat, because then all of the construction traffic, delivery of materials damages that seal coat. So we'll be able to monitor that a little bit better, and then put it on when it's the right time to get that on. I would say it's going to happen before the two-year period. That's what we're going to, the goal would be. It may happen in the first year, if a lot of the homes get constructed, and we're ready to do that. So that's one of the major changes that we're recommending, is that there be a bond. Contract, or developers are required to post that at the beginning of their project, and they'll have to, we'll hold that and get that work done at the unit price that we got on our bids. So, any questions with regards to that?
One little question, is there any fluctuate, is there much fluctuation in the price of the seal coat? Like would, if they're paying a cash price at, when they place the bond, and the price change, will the price change very much from the seal coat?
So, there is a potential, so our three-year contract has a little bit of price variation based on the cost of the oil. So if oil prices go up significantly, I think it's above a 10% increase, then they can come in and request an increase as well. This would also be increased to match whatever we're currently paying for that price. And that's what we're anticipating to do, is it'll be at the unit price for that work to be done.
Can they pay less? Can we pay them less if the price goes down?
Yes.
No.
And it goes, we aren't intending to make money, we're just planning for them to pay for what we're going to pay to have the work done. And again, you know, I saw a bid this week, for example, they were requesting... They were requesting 17 cents a square foot, and I can get it done for 14 cents a square foot with our contract. So we would, we would just do it under our contract. So that's, that's one of the major changes that we recommend, and we think it'll be a great resource for us to get a lot of these brand-new roads sealed up. We're trying to do it with all the road projects that we're doing. You'll notice that. And then also with any new development work. The other change here is one, section 1.09. We now have a street light utility. We've purchased the streetlights, and therefore, we need a process for being able to request new streetlights. This section defines on how that will be done with developers, how they submit their request to install lights, what the costs are, fees, things of that nature. Essentially, if you want to know more, I guess, ask me. There is a, there's a set fee. They'll pay it. We'll have the work done and reimburse them the difference. So they're just paying for the cost to have the streetlight installed for the city. And then the other few major, or changes that we have... Did I select out of it? I think I did. So we had a few in this other summary of revisions here. The other things that I think we should talk about are, we had, we're having a lot of problems with storm drain pipes running through people's backyards. And these ones, we have a really difficult time because trees are planted right next to them, root intrusions. We don't have access to people's backyards. It's really difficult to clean and maintain. Our recommendation to help with that problem is that any time that we have a constant flowing pipe, so a pipe that is spring-fed, has groundwater, or anything of that nature coming into it, where roots will tend to just grow right into the pipe, in that situation, we would do a fused pipe rather than a typical gasketed pipe. So right now, in the past, we've done what's called HDPE, corrugated HDPE pipe, just has a gasketed joint, and we have a lot of problems with the roots growing in those. To help solve that problem, we're recommending that any time it's in a backyard with constant water, that it has to be a fused pipe installed. So pretty straightforward on that. One other thing that I wanted to mention down in the second section. Oh, we've also updated our standards for like service, services and things of that nature. In the past, the city has all, done all of that work. Very rare, actually, in, in the development world for the cities to actually come and install the setter. And we're changing that, so there will be a setter, and the contractor will be responsible for that. And so that's, that's shown here in the drawing as well. I guess I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. I don't want to keep on go through every one of these, but could if you'd like, but...
Do you have all 300 and something pages memorized, Marty?
No, not even close.
On page 160.
But I do have opinion about every, all 300 pages.
Any questions for Marty? Okay, it is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up to the public. If you have questions or comments on this item, please come up and state your name and, and your question. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back up here.
No one else has opinion about the 300 pages?
Adding stuff, I tell you.
Any, any further discussion by the council? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion for adoption of resolution 2017-61 to update the public work standard specifications and drawings and adopt them as the 2017 edition?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. By voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's unanimous. Okay. Next item is 9B. This is a public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance 2017-43, amending City Code Section 10-11E-2-12, parking, loading and access that regulates parking requirements for developing in a cur, the, for development in the commercial sub-district of the downtown village. The existing code requires two parking stalls for each residential unit. The proposed amendment would change the parking requirements for residential developments that provide for senior housing.
Now is my time to connect. One second. Mayor, council, thank you so much. I wonder, one day I'm going to get used to this without my heart feeling like it's going to escape out of my body. So a couple of months ago, I remember staff presented a court amendment for the downtown in which, okay, I'm going to hand this to Marty so he can help me while I keep my, with my presentation. Okay, but this is simple. So like I said, a couple of months ago, staff brought up to you guys a, some court amendments for the downtown, especially for the downtown commercial area. So when we were working on it, we set up the parking standards at, for every residential unit, two parking standards, no matter what. And for any commercial, I, in the code we wrote, please refer to Code 18. Code 18 is what we have in Chapter 18. Chapter 18 is where we have all of our specifications for parking. Like if it's a restaurant, then you need X number. If it's a retail, you need X. If it's an office, you need X. So I'm working with an applicant. Eventually, we're going to present to you guys a, a new site plant. And the division or what he's proposing is senior housing. So in Chapter 18, we recognize senior housing, and we set up a standard for senior housing of parking of 1.25. Means one and a quarter. So every, for units, then we have one extra parking for visitors. So, but we have it in Chapter 18, but we don't have that specification on the downtown part. So we still say two for every residential. So what we're trying to do here is to include that 1.25 into the downtown. And it says something along the lines, well, what Marty gets it, that it says something along the lines that for all residential, well, for residential units, two parking stalls are required, except for senior housing where 1.25 is the requirement. So that's what it is. Oh, and one more thing. This is, it says also for apartments that are up to two bedrooms. If it's more than two bedrooms, then you go back to the two, two stalls required.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Daniel? Ben?
No, Daniel, thanks for the hard work on this. It looks good, so.
Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. This is a public hearing. So if there's anybody that has questions or comments on this item, please come up and state your
Yeah, I'm, excuse me, I'm James Martinow, and I do a lot of commercial building work. When you say senior housing, are you talking about 55-plus or 62-plus, which makes a large difference on the number of people who will be parking and driving cars in that, as I am currently working on projects similar to that. And 55-plus has a higher parking stall requirement than 62-plus.
You're saying practical. There's a practical need for more?
Yes.
So I'm pretty sure you guys are also familiar with the, we should have a laser.
Here's one. Do you want this one, Daniel?
Thank you.
Yeah, four offers.
I withdraw.
Hate losing.
It's, it's, we have a development right here. If you guys, I mean, that's been built. I, I wish the applicant was here to help us out. But whatever the age was set for this, and I, I don't know the number exactly, it's just going to be an extension of the, of what's right here. It's going to go to the front. So whatever these guys been, so these guys and the development that is right here, they've been using 1.25. I've been doing a couple of field trips, and there's no parking on the street or anything like that. There's no overflow, overflow parking. So whatever the numbers for these guys is going to be the same for, for the development, it's going to go right here. So I don't have the specific number 55 or 65, but what I can say is it's going to be an extension of the development from the north.
So you're saying that given whatever the spec was at that time and the parking requirement, there, what is the age on that one? 55.
That one.
It must be, because we have a friend that didn't realize it until he signed his contract. So it's 55-plus.
55, 55.
And you're saying practically, you went out several times measured.
Correct.
They do not have a parking problem at 1.25?
Correct, at 1.25.
Does that answer your question, James? Okay.
And that, and that was the standard applied, with the same standard applied to the future development.
Okay, thank you.
55-plus.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back up here. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-43, amending City Code Section 10-E, 11-E-2-12, parking and loading access that regulates parking requirements for development in a commercial sub-district of the downtown village zone?
Second.
We have a motion by Diana. We have a second by Lynn. By voice, Ben?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous. Okay, I think item C was continued. So we're now on item 9D, public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance 2017-45 to rezone approximately .6 acres of land from rural residential zone to R112 single-family on property located at approximately 1628 West, 1100 North.
Mayor, council, this is a rezone to go from a rural residential zone to R112 single-family residential. The applicant has got dent, and there was a mistake in, in there. The actual acreage is .9. No .6, but .9. Yeah, so, let me see. Here we go. In order to explain this a little bit, let me go back to 2014. So in 2014, another rezone came to you. It went to planning commission and it came to city council, and it got approved. So in 2014, if we can take a look at this map, this area right here, the dark area, was already, was approved to be rezoned from RR to R112. Okay? Not just that, but also the corner right here. So before 2014, everything was real residential. In 2014, again, this area right here, the area inside the red part, already go rezoned. And the intent to do that is because there was going to be a, a development, a plat, a subdivision that was going to come. The applicant stopped pursuing the subdivision. However, the rezone stayed like that. And it's been like that for three years already. So what happened is that this piece of land here remained RR. At that time, in 2014, the owner of this property wanted to keep his animal rights or son. So that's why this area stayed as rural residential. He was a little hesitant to join the subdivision. Right now, the applicant, three years later, he came and said, you know what? Now I also have this, this land, and this is a good opportunity to clean up this spot zoning that we have right there and to turn this into R112. So now, the new plat that is going to be presented to you guys later includes not only this area right here, but also the area that is being proposed. Let me show you. This is the ALB of the part, and we're only applying the rezoning to this .9 of an acre, only to this area right there. Yeah. And this is the proposed. How it's going to look if it gets approved.
Okay, cool. Questions for Daniel?
Daniel, is that all the same ownership then?
Now it is.
Now it is?
Now it is, yeah.
I guess I have a question maybe that Tina's better able to answer, but is this concern with noticing of a .6 versus a .9 a concern that would justify us continuing the matter?
No, Daniel brought the mistake up to me yesterday evening or this morning. And I checked the advertisement, and as long as the address is there and the rezone request is there and what it's going to be rezoned to, the, the purpose of notice is to put anybody who might be interested in that parcel property on notice that something's going to happen. All the other documents do have the correct .9 rather than the .6. So I don't believe it needs to be re-advertised or continued because of that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Daniel? Okay, it is a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open it up for public input. Anyone have a comment? Please come up and state your name.
Shawn Walker, 1728 West, 1250 North. And can I borrow your pointer?
Here.
Thank you. So how do we go back, if it's okay, you guys, go back a slide or two, to where we can see the aerial just before that? So I live right here, okay? And I've followed this project along here. I know these folks over there. Talked to the president. So obviously, I feel like my government has let me down, not you, but the city of American Fork, by not giving enough notice to all these residents here because of this building. I feel like that's devalued my house by about $150,000. I'm a real estate agent for the last 20 years, so I'm not guessing at that. I also hear rumor of a road getting punched through, blah, blah, blah. Hey, I can't stop that if that's what you guys want to do eventually. And I follow this mess over here, and now a bunch of blighted homes, and who knows when these folks are going to put in their old residential homes and all that. So I guess what I'm, my comment is not necessarily, I don't think I can stop this if it's already been decided, but what are you guys going to do to actually protect these homeowners that have been paying their taxes for years that they didn't do? Because there's plenty enough room for setback to push this building another 20 feet and not destroy home values of all these people over here without any real notice, period. And I gave the mayor my opinion on that move over there and told him he's kind of crooked. So I just want to hear what you guys are going to do to make sure this isn't condos. I know it can't be condos, but crappy little houses. They're building some nice houses over here, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think the next item, if I'm not mistaken, deals with your question.
Okay.
It's what they want to put in the area.
Yeah.
Assuming, assuming the rezone, the rezone is to make that parcel compliant with what's around it.
Okay.
Matching R112.
Are you guys hearing my, because the, the hearing over here didn't go so well for everybody?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know if we all remember that.
Yeah, it was to make that one, that was going to be from residential to commercial.
Right.
This is going the other direction.
But we all know she's never going to sell in this lifetime, that piece, right?
But we're talking about this parcel.
Right, I'm just saying, commercial's coming. I, I hope you guys are responsible with protecting your citizens here as the commercial comes and as these guys try to cram in more density and the builders are looking for land in these high-value areas. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
So, just hang, hang here for a second.
Oh, yes, please, sorry.
So every, every parcel in town has a zone. There's, there's all different kinds of zones. So let me just explain a couple of things about the zones. The R in front of it is residential.
You knew I was a Realtor for 20 years, right?
Okay, I'm, but I'm explaining.
So I'm going to walk away now if you're going to be condescending.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Hang with me for just a second. So, and I, I'm grateful that you already know this, but there's a lot of people that probably don't.
Okay.
But this is a really good protection for everyone. When you buy a piece of property to understand what it is that you're buying, and every, the city is all divided up into different zones. And so the R is residential. When it says RR, that means residential rural. And usually, those are acre, half-acre parcels. The 12, the R112, means that there's one dwelling and that the lot size has to be 12,000 square feet. So the R1A means that the lot size has to be 8,000 square feet. So whenever you see, whenever we make a determination on a, on a zone, we take very seriously the fact that we look at the neighboring zones. We also look at what people bought. There is a perceived value for every purchase and it's not monetary. So I understand that you're trying to honor the value of your neighborhood and we take that very, very seriously.
But not everybody in government does. Because is that a common sense setback with that hospital building right there? It's zoned for it, but is that the right ethical thing to do to protect the citizens? Absolutely not. And I'm just saying, please don't do that to us in this new section of land that could be a beautiful neighborhood. Don't destroy our values even more. And that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and I think that the R112 is a good, I think that is a good honor.
All they thought about was tax revenue, that's it. Not about people or voters or taxpayers. That's it. That's all I'm asking you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for expressing that. Anyone else? Please come state your name.
My name is Debbie Einfelt and this was my grandma's farm. This, all this property.
The parcel being discussed?
Yes. And my, my mother actually owns that lot north. And my question is, if you put in that many homes, are you going to punch that street through and who's going to bear the cost of putting in that road that obviously is butted up to each side of the property?
You want to address that, Daniel?
Yes. I'll for sure explain that in the, in the next item when I talk about the subdivision.
Well, give her a preview.
Do you want me to go ahead and explain it right now?
Just, just, the road goes from there to there and the developer pays for it. Thank you.
But only half of the road. Correct, only half of the road, not the entire road. It's going to have a crash gate right there and a crash gate right here. So, there we go. So as you can see, only, only half of the road right here is constructed. Whenever your mom decides to do something with this land and she wants to develop, then she will be in charge of her part of the road. But right now, only half of the road will be built on this side. So we, they won't mess with your mom's property at all. There's still going to be half of the road there, but it won't be, cars won't go through it at this point.
So it's a really good question. It actually pertains to the next item. This one is just about the rezone. I mean, it's great, they're connected. You know, if I were in your situation, I'd be thinking, there is no difference here. But from a legal perspective, there is. One's a rezone and the other's the actual plat. Did that answer your question?
I'm sure.
Okay, so not yet then. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back up here. Are there further discussion items?
One question for you, Daniel. In your presentation, I didn't hear the comments about what happened at the Planning Commission level. If you could just give us a quick overview.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council. There was a group that got together, a group of neighbors, especially neighbors that live around here, they got together and they were, they had some questions. They came to the Planning Commission. Some of the questions were about like, are these people going to lose their animal rights? The answer is no, because we're not messing with their properties at all. They wish, they wish that they wouldn't rezone this and it will stay the same. I, well, during the, the Planning Commission meeting, we explained to the, to the best of my abilities that this was already rezoned and all this item, it was only pertaining to the .9 acres. A lot of them hadn't even realized that this part was already rezoned in 2014. So we explained again to the best of our abilities. I was presented the Planning Commission. I even, I think it was four of them, after the meeting, I talked to them in a separate room, tried to explain to them that we were messing with no animal rights whatsoever to these properties. And then if they wish to participate in future, given zone to certain areas, they're welcome to participate on the general plan designation when we work on it. The voting at the Planning Commission was unanimously approved. That answer your question?
Yes, that's perfect. Thanks, Daniel.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote or a motion.
May I make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2017-45 to rezone approximately .9 acres of land from RR, rural residential zone to R112, single-family residential zone, on property located approximately 1628 West, 1100 North.
Second.
We have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana, by voice Lynn.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay. That's it for the public hearing items. We're going to go into Section 10 now, Item A, to consider for approval, a final subdivision plat called Carries Cove Plat A that includes 11 residential lots on property located at approximately 1628 West, 1100 North, in the R112, single-family residential zone. So this is, this is the one that covers your question.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now that this entire zone is R112, it means that it's residential, that the minimum lot is 12,000 square feet. Just this right here, every single lot right here will be bigger than the lots right here per zone, because this ones are 8,000. So these ones are bigger than that. The applicant is proposing a 11 lots. In our general plan, the R112 zone is considered low-density residential. So it's still low-density. Again, what the applicant is proposing is 11 lots in this area right here. Here's a copy of the plat that includes now the entire area in the red. There we go. So that's the 11 lots, okay? The applicant took advantage of lot averaging, meaning that you can have a couple lots that are smaller, but then you need to compensate with lots that are bigger. But only one lot is smaller than 12,000, which is this one right here. But as you can see, a lot of the lots are, this lot is 14,000, 15,000, 14,000. So they definitely compensate on the size of the lot. So even though the minimum square footage for a lot is 12,000, they're going for lots bigger than that, meaning they can feed bigger homes, obviously. In regards to the road, see if I can explain it clear. It's ideal that when we develop or when a developer comes with a plan, that they get together a bunch of property owners and they work on a, on a plan. Now this road right here is part of the, of the facility plan. That road is planned for. If you guys can see right here in this map, you can see that the road goes right here, stops, and we have another road that eventually is going to meet right to that one right there. Now, because the only person at this point who is developing is the person within these boundaries, it's required for them to pay and to construct their part of the road, meaning half side of the road. Now, it was my understanding that that's what we present to Planning Commission, that this road won't be open to the public yet. So it will be for emergency exit only. That's why we'll have some crash gates right there, in case fire department needs to, to attend an emergency or something like that, there's still access to that. Lot number six and lot number five will have the driveways oriented towards 1600 West. So the frontage will be right here and the frontage will be right there. So that's the 11 lots that are proposed by the subdivision. This item as well came to the Planning Commission and it was unanimously approved. Do you have a comment, Marty?
Just one thing with those lot orientations. So if 1250 North, let's say it develops next year and the road does get constructed, then lots five and six could orient towards 1250 North. But right now, if they were to come in for a building permit now, they have to orient to the full street. So just, just to be clear, it's not in the future if the road's there and they don't build a house for a few years and the road gets constructed, they could orient the other direction. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Marty. Does orient mean where the driveway is or the facing of the house?
The facing's front door.
Okay.
So since this is now being developed, nothing's going to happen right here, at the time that this land, they try to develop, then they will be responsible for the other half of the road.
Okay. Just, I want to turn over here. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any, anything else you want to say, Daniel?
No, Mayor, I don't know if I mentioned this, but it was again approved unanimously. The recommendation was unanimous from the Planning Commission.
This one seems a little more straightforward. I wish the other gentleman had remained. I don't see him. But I think that also covers his question about whether it's going to be an office building or high-density housing. I don't think so. It'll actually be a lot that's about a third larger than the lot he's currently on.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any discussion here at the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we approve a final subdivision plat called Carries Cove Plat A that includes 11 residential lots on property located approximately 1628 West, 1100 North, in the R112, the newly-formed R112, single-family residential zone.
A second?
Were there any findings on that? I'm sorry. No? Okay. Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Item, Items 10B and C were continued to December 5th. So we're on Item 10D, to consider for approval, a request for a Class A off-premise beer license, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, for the Sing Power Inc., Convenience Store Fuel Station located at 95, 95 West Center. Did I pronounce that correct? Thank you.
Mayor and Council, the Hartz Gas and Convenience Store on West Center Street is changing hands, changing ownership, and state law requires that they, the new owners apply for a new off-premise beer license if they're going to sell beer. So that's what you have in front of you. In your packet, you have the application from the applicant. You have a brief synopsis from our business license clerk, Carol Emery, indicating that they have complied with all of the requirements and submitted all of the documents. There are a couple of things that seem to still be in progress before the business license is actually issued. So I would ask that you make your motion conditioned upon those things being finalized and approved prior to the license being issued.
So those are the ones on the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
Further requirements needed to be completed.
Can we have the applicant come up for just a second? Welcome. Are you near Pleasant Grove?
No, I'm from Riverton.
Oh, okay. And so you just purchased the, tell us a little bit about the history and the business.
So I'm trying to purchase, so it's already under contract and just waiting on the closing date from the bank.
Uh-huh.
And as, I was not aware that I have to come in front of a meeting for a business license. I already had one in autumn and it was simple and easy, just go to the City House and apply with you all the paperwork.
Now, you're going to keep the Hartz name and the municipal residence?
I can't keep the Hartz name because that's a brand name.
Okay.
So I can't keep that one.
Oh, really?
So you're renaming it?
Yeah, so.
And so you own one other?
Sorry?
You own one?
I had one another before.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, I think on this one, you're just here for the, the off-premise alcohol license, which is required by the state.
Yeah.
So that's why you're here.
I'm pretty familiar with all the environment and everything.
You would be.
It's just some paperwork, so we check hand-provided before the closing for, with the bank. It has to be on the day of the closing or after.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was not sure when the meeting is going to be for the next time.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions?
Welcome.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, Mayor, that we, we approve the request for Class A off-premises beer license for the Sing Power Inc., close enough, Convenience Store Fuel Station located at 95 West Center, conditioned upon the, further terms as outlined.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, congratulations. Okay. Item E is to consider for adoption in ordinance 2017-46, amending Title I, Chapter 14 of the Pleasant Grove Municipal Code relating to records access and management by adding provisions for a municipal retention schedule and providing for an effective date.
So Mayor and Council, as we have previously discussed in several meetings regarding the Government Records Access Management Act, our grandma, there is, there are two parts to that state statute. One governs when a record needs to be kept, what a record is, and when it needs to be disclosed, and the classifications of public, private, protected, or controlled. The other aspect is how long you have to retain a record. The state has a guideline that they've been going by, that they have adopted for their state organization, and they have allowed municipalities to adopt their own retention schedule. With regard to electronic communications, emails, texts, we have received numerous recent grandma requests for those types of records. And the question has been, well, how far back do we go? How far back are we supposed to produce the record? We have not had on our local ordinance books anything that said how long you have to retain those electronic communications. So the ordinance in front of you simply adopts, for the most part, the state standard for retention. For electronic communications, it simply says until they're no longer needed, if they don't address any actual business. Otherwise, it needs to be turned into a different type of record. The only other deviation from the state guidelines for retention was the press releases. They had them being a permanent record. I did not see us actually as a policy matter, being able to retain every press release of the city permanently. So we've made those 10 years. Those are the only, that's the only deviation from the state.
Other than that, the timeframes, classifications, they're all outlined by the state.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Tina?
Do you have any idea, Tina, how many press releases we issue in a given year?
I don't, to be honest with you, because the police do their own and I don't know, I don't have a handle on how often that occurs. It depends on how many big cases they have, I assume, in a year, which is unpredictable. And then I would also probably classify in press releases, some of the announcements that David makes for grand openings and those types of things. And so I, I don't have a, a number.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2017-46, amending Title I, Chapter 14 of the Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code relating to records access and management by added provisions for municipal retention schedule and providing for effective date.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous.
And then as Mrs. Varney requested, we can get the numbers for the actual dollar amount of how much a grandma request, maybe in this last calendar year, has cost, but also tie to it, the hours, even though it's not calculated in an actual dollar amount, but how much staff time we're putting into grandma requests. Is that something we can have available as well?
Yeah, we can give her an estimate.
Okay.
So, I mean, just to follow up on that, so our, like Tina's time, my time, I don't track that when it comes to grandma stuff, because I, we can't be compensated for that. So we can track the hours that we turn around and charge and we can let people know what that is, but...
But is there a way to even estimate? Because that, even though by law that shouldn't be calculated, it does take away from your time and office time when we're getting numerous grandma requests. So is there a way that you can even estimate that?
Yeah, so I guess that's what I'm saying. It would be an estimate.
That's fine.
There's not a concrete.
I think that would be important for the public to know.
All right, Item F, to consider for adoption in ordinance 2017-47, amending Title I, Chapter 10, Officers and Employees, Section 2, Appointed Officers', Appointment, of the Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code to comply with recent changes in the state code regarding the appointment of municipal recorders and treasurers and providing for an effective date.
This is also basically a housekeeping item, making sure that our local ordinance is updated and in con, in conformance with the state statute. Prior to this, the state statute listed the appointed officers in a municipality and provided that they would serve and continue in office until their successors are appointed and qualified, with the exception of the city recorder and the city treasurer. Prior to this, it, the law required that they would be reappointed, appointed or reappointed after each municipal election. And in the 2017 legislative session, the state legislature decided that that was unnecessary and that it was a burden on cities- that was unnecessary, and that it was a burden on cities to remember to do that every two years, and for city recorders and city treasurers to have to worry about whether or not they were going to be reappointed every two years. So the state legislature just made them consistent with the other appointed officers, and they will be appointed and serve until someone else is appointed in their place. Our local ordinance, we just are asking you to approve amendments that make that consistent.
Just incorporates those two items.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand seventeen dash forty-seven, amending Title One, Chapter ten, Officers and Employees, Section Two, Appointed Officers', Appointment of the Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code to Comply with Recent Changes in the State Code Regarding the Appointment of Municipal Recorders and Treasurers and Providing for an Effective Date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Sid. By voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That completes Section ten. We're now up for items for discussion. The first is eleven A. It's a discussion and possible action regarding the public safety building, public safety buildings and budget update. Scott, you're gonna introduce whoever's speaking?
Well, good, I was wondering, I couldn't see Jim, tucked back in the corner. So while Jim Child is our architect on our public safety building, while he's setting up, let me just kinda explain what we're gonna go over here. So the architect will talk, will show the design and the site of the building, kinda where we're at, we're pretty much... Marty, can I help you? We'll go over all the design and site issues for the building. We have Big D, our general contractor, here. They will go over what we're doing with the bidding right now and also the construction schedule. After them, I will go over the budget numbers. After I am done, then we have Guy Fugel and Dave Holdaway, our citizen representatives on the Owners Committee. They will both address the City Council, give you the citizen perspective.
Okay.
So with that, I'll turn it to Jim.
Okay. Pulling that up.
Are you connecting here?
Yes. While he's pulling that up, what I'm going to take you through is a brief overview of where the design and of the project stands right now. We've obviously been here a few months ago. We've been working hard with your committee of staff and citizens that we've been working through, and also together with Big D in the developing, the estimating, there's been numerous, let's say, as we've gone back and forth in the estimating, the budgeting, to try to work within the city's budget, we have made numerous changes and adjustments to the plan to try to bring that, bring it into, into the right scope and with that. But I think that hopefully then your, both your chiefs, both Chief Smith and Chief Thomas, as well as the others, will feel that they've, they have a facility that will, I think, meet their needs and really, really perform well for them. Whoops.
What fate, what percent are you at now with design?
What, to update, currently, we have, we have actually leased, I guess I'll go ahead and explain roughly, the, we've divided this into two bid packages right now, and the goal was to work with the earthwork, the concrete and structural steel, and to get that out as soon as possible to allow construction to begin as soon as possible, and that has been being bid right now, so that part of the project, we are currently trying to finalize the other, rest of the designs for the building, the interiors, the interior finishes, and I'll go over some of those and present those with you today. We've, and those are intended to be submitted for building permit and, and the balance of bidding the middle of December, so that will be approximately the fifteenth of December.
So what percent are you at now?
I would estimate that we're at approximately sixty percent complete of construction documents.
And you expect to have the, are you guys live over there? Okay. And you expect to have the bids for that first part of it done by the middle of December? Is that what we heard?
I don't know, do you wanna go ahead and, I'll let them update that since we're talking about it.
We're gonna jump all over till we get this done.
Yeah, but I might as well.
I don't know.
I'm filling time.
That's okay. So, the first bid package, which is the site and structural package, it's, like he said, is out right now. We anticipate getting those bids back in the first part of next week. Hopefully, if we need to give them more time to get better numbers, we will do so, 'cause that's the priority, to make sure we get good numbers. But that'll be next week, so we anticipate having numbers for bid package one before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And recommendation to the city for who we will award that work to following, the week following Thanksgiving, and hopefully starting construction right around the first part of December, so.
And since we're getting way ahead of ourselves, some of the members of the Public Safety Committee building that, that worked for about a year and a half on this, they're interested in a date that you're going to be doing a groundbreaking?
Yeah, we discussed that with Scott this afternoon. We think maybe the first week of December, first full week, I think the fourth through whatever that week is, anytime in there, we'd be happy to accommodate a groundbreaking.
Okay. And that's gonna be published somehow, so we can get that out there?
Yeah.
To them?
Yeah. So we'll talk about it tomorrow and maybe come up with some options for the council, 'cause it can really be anytime that week, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Start working towards that.
You up? Okay, is there anything else you wanna jump forward that doesn't require your presentation?
Oh, hey, we're getting close. Okay, we're getting there. Okay. We have also, this past week, we met with the Planning Commission, and the, we've been working with the Planning Commission, as you know, you are in this, in your downtown village ordinance, and so there's been great effort in the design of the facility, the facades, the materials, as we talked about in some of our previous presentations, to basically meet with the intent of that ordinance and, and to come through with that. It's, you'll see, this right here is First South right here that we, excuse me, the...
That's one of the...
Yes, First South, that's right, yes, First South right here. The front of the building right here, this will be the main entrance into the police and courts area of the building. I'll go into a plan here in a moment, but I wanted to cover the site, the existing city hall is right here. You have parking back behind here. This is intended to be convenience parking for working with the courts and the police during the day, as people come for, for business with that, that's convenience parking for that, for larger events that will be taking place in the community room, multipurpose community room areas. That will spill over into parking here, and obviously continue on down with street parking in those areas. The, the fire, this, this is a two-story facility that we'll talk about here a little bit, that, the two-story is on this end here towards the, towards the west, that includes the, some of the police administration in that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The, the fire is located over here on Second with exiting onto Second. After a lot of discussion, it was decided that that was the best direction to get that exiting, the busyness of this street right here is, is, creates difficulties for them frequently, and so we'll be bringing them out onto here where they have the benefits of the light, that can be controlled for the emergency access there. This area here is being designed right now as a, we'll call it a segregated parking area for police and fire, and also court staff, and your dispatch staff. The, we'd like to make it a secured area, but right now the, the funding for that, the fencing and the secure gates is in an alternate that we're looking at, so if we can, but right, but we're trying to use that as, right now it at least secures it and segregates it, so additional public parking along the street for the fire, for those that might be coming to the fire station. Let's see, can you go ahead and click to the next slide there? This is the fire station's main public entrance off of Second right here. You'll see the apparatus bays, the drive-through apparatus bays, which they can come in from the north side and they'll exit on the south side here onto Second. This area right here is the, as I say, is your main public entrance that comes into a public lobby area, which then also goes into a training, training room, into this training meeting room for the, for the fire department. They also have, and then their main administration offices are back here. So this area of it is a, somewhat, can be used by the public and will be used for meeting with the fire administration that they're currently, or we're using in their other facility. These other areas are support areas for their workouts and other kinds of things. We've placed some of the shop functions that they work with up on this end for a couple of reasons. One, because those are, some of those are real noisy functions that we wanna keep away from, the sleeping rooms that are on the second level, but also because it allows us to create some smaller elements on that east end to kind of lessen the impact of that facade. These are obviously fairly large high bays, and by putting this on the end of it, we can step the roof down towards the street there and make that a little less impact on the street there. Upstairs, you'll see, this is, this is really the heart of the facility. This has really been designed to try to, I guess, maybe even rectify a little bit of what your, your fire staff has gone through for years up there, but with a dining and eating room up in this area, and, and the sleeping rooms surrounding this with, with windows on the outside, and then they exit down into these areas with the stairs here, and there is a, and a pole here down this, and right into the fire bay. So just, that's just kind of a general overview. Why don't you click the next slide, and we've got a couple of renderings of the existing that you can see of the building there. Again, you can see efforts have been made to meet with character of the downtown ordinance, I mean, the downtown guidelines that we're trying to get here with the wainscot material and that material. We've brought some samples of those materials, I don't know if we can... The masonry that, just some actual samples, because some of these colors aren't exactly perfect, and then this, this honed, this honed type material here would be used on that lower wainscot area to, to give a base to it, and then some precast, precast concrete type elements through this area again to do that, so.
So it's becoming more, more functional kinda look, rather than a design and...
Well, we're trying to keep it as simple as possible. We started out, really, we're trying to use an actual stone here, but as we've gone through the budgeting process, we've found that we can, we believe we can get that same look with this honed concrete masonry product. It's a, it's a honed concrete with quite a large savings there, so we can still get the offset that you're after to kind of create that. You see the pilastering that, let's see if, hit the lights again there, we maybe see that a little bit better. This, this, these pilasters that are created here, again, is one of the guidelines that that's looked, that's, that's emphasized in your downtown ordinances there. Go ahead and hit the next slide there if you could, just another slide of the area there, that, your apparatus bays, you can kind of see, as I say, we're trying to step this down on this end, so it's not quite as tall as it comes up towards that end.
I see five doors.
Five doors. As you know, we started out trying to do six doors. We've worked great lengths with Chief Thomas on that. As we've gone through the budgeting process to try to, as I, as I say, bring this in with the budgets that have been allowed, we've, we've made the decision to go to five bays, and Chief Thomas has agreed to that and feels that that will meet the needs of his, of his equipment that we can, can put in here. Go ahead and maybe hit the next one there and have some, you can see some of the interior areas here, again, this is something that your firefighters have never had, really. This is the, this is a dining and kitchen area there and another area, this is that main lobby area. We also hope to, what we're trying to do is provide a place where you can park that historic fire engine and use it as, use it as a display, so this element is where your, your school groups and scout groups will come through for tours and begin their tours in this, in this lobby area. The police area, that, there's the police and courts function that you can see here is, is set up, again, this main common front lobby here coming in from First South, you can see here is, is, leads right into this large space here, and you can see from the size of the group here today that this meeting room is not, it would not be appropriately sized. It has some several folding doors in here that are set up so that you've got multipurpose use in it. The council dais is, is built here with a folding door that will cover that off. This central, these two folding doors create a large conference meeting room that can be used during the day. We also have this area right here that it can be used for larger training and larger meetings. Those can be opened up, obviously, for a large council, planning commission meetings, those other functions, or they can be, if you use it just for a larger community event, then just the one can be opened and you can close off the dais to protect the equipment and that that's there, so that you have a nice... But you have restrooms and a lobby area available. We've also tried to provide a little bit larger lobby area for, as you know, what happens over in your existing city hall on court days, as people are meeting out in the halls and up and down the, wherever they can, on top of each other for the conferencing. That would, that would happen out here. The court would also take place in this council chamber, it's a multipurpose council chamber and courtroom. This area of the building leads to the court. This is the court clerks area right here, this is a little sub-lobby leaving the court's clerk offices, the judges' chambers. We've also created a council workspace back here that is also functions as a jury room for the, for the court. Again, this is, this is behind the secure area, the public area is primarily the lobby and leading into the council, the multipurpose room, with, as I say, with restrooms out here. So that, these other areas are all secured back-of-house staff areas. This end is the police, you come into a sub-lobby for the police clerks, and also we have your, some of the more public functions, the victim witness advocates, advocates and things like that, are up in that area to work with people there. This area of the facility is all back-of-the-house police. You have detainee holding areas for the court that are right, that they can come in through this soli port here, it's also detainee holding area and processing for the police that will work there, and then they've got access directly into the court area here. These are some of the police squad areas, briefing rooms, squad areas, and, and work sta, all open office workstations for the lieutenants and sergeants and that. This is the evidence, that's evidence handling areas, vehicle processing bays, and some bulk evidence processing bays that come in through this area. So as I say, this back-of-house is all kept very separated and secured from the, from the public areas in the front. This area right here is also your main staff entrance for the police. We have a staff entrance that comes in off of this area from that segregated parking area for the court staff. This is for both police and your, and your dispatch, which we have moved to the second floor. So if you're over here to the second floor, you can see you can come up here. This is the investigations function. One of the things we try to do is locate all the patrol functions right here on the first floor where they can get in and out quickly, because they're coming and going from the facility much more often, the, a little more of the investigations and the police administration are upstairs here. We have the, again, the dispatch function over in this area with your dispatch and some of their support functions, that it's twenty, that allows us to be a twenty-four seven facility in that area. So why don't you hit the next one there, and we can kinda look at some of the, whoops, next slide? Maybe? Doesn't want to show you the next slide. There we go. Let's see, did you skip one? Okay, let's go, okay. This is looking from up here and looking down the street there. One of the things we're trying to do with this street here, you'll see, is you do have parking on both sides. We've, we've narrowed the street so that it is, the idea that it is still, the access is still there, but it is primarily a parking access and access for these sites. You can see, again, the pilasters, the wainscoting elements, the precast headers and such. We've also tried to bring some of that honed material into, into an element here at the entry, which you can see.
What is that right there to the left of the entrance?
This right here?
Right, to the left, yeah, what?
This is actually the, the, those restrooms that you see as you walk into that public area, and we've brought in, as I say, some of this flame elements, but it's a solid element on either side of there, that's where those restrooms are, that kind of form that lobby area there.
That white car's clearly there for traffic school.
Yes, that's right. I, I just can't, my guys that do the rendering, they, they just, I can't stop them from doing that sort of thing, they just... Okay, go ahead and, you can see as we, as I mentioned, we go to more of a two-story element here on the west end of the building, that you can see here. Go ahead and go to the next one there if you want to. This is looking into that multipurpose council, meeting room area, courtroom area. These are the folding doors that come across on these two tracks here. This is that lobby function that is open to the public. Down at that end is the court. You're standing down by the police entrance, these are the acc... These are the acts, these are the doors coming into the, into the room there. One of the things we've also sized this for is on court days, you come in through that main entrance and turn to the left, there would be screening set up at that point. That's where your magnetometer and that would be, so they can screen that whole east half of the lobby or east two-thirds of the lobby for court days and keep that all, everyone there. Rather than just screening going into the courtroom, they'll screen everybody that goes into that area, so it allows for the, a much smoother function of your court.
Jim, can you address the yellow, the yellow corner brick wall there?
Oh, yes, that's right. Excuse me. In this, in the lobby area there, this area right here is a, where we've saved some of the, the bricks from the recreation building, and we are going to use, do a, an element here on this, in this area right here that is, that's going to hopefully indicate some of the shapes of some of the windows there. We can work with some of that brick to get some of that arch look there and create a, create a panel, some panels there that actually create that with, along with some pictures and, and some acknowledgement and of the history of the, of the recreation building. So that is right in that area. It's in the main lobby there. Um, as I said, we're going to go to that next slide again, we can take you to the next, go to the last slide, so, I don't know. Questions?
You talked about the reduction of six bays to five.
Yes.
What other trimming has been done?
I would say all the way through, what we have tried to do with that, with this facility, um, everything has been, has been shrunk, everything has been made multipurpose that can be made multipurpose. As I say, the way that council chamber has been made with, so that it can be used, the main center of it is a large, a large conference room, so that the other conference rooms, the other conference room is provided in the building is, is downsized a little bit because of that, and we were able to do that. The spaces up in the, you'll find up in the police areas, we've been able to really work with the size of those, all of the, all of the investigations, all of those officers are all in workstations now. That, that creates a smaller, that creates a smaller space there. We only have a couple of offices up there for administration and for a couple of functions that need to be secured behind offices for investigative purposes. We have may, also made some decisions regarding some of your IT functions, uh, rather than moving every, creating a large server, large server and IT facility there and enlarging the building to accommodate that, to keep some of those into the existing city hall and just provide for this building and that building for the, for the IT functions and servers are only serving this building rather than all of the city. And, uh, trying to think what else we have done there as we work through it.
So, so Jim, we, we started off with a scaled-down footprint. And, and the idea was to be able to allow for that growth into the 50,000 range.
Right.
What are we looking at now?
You mean as far as square footage or, or people?
I'm looking at...
Your population growth?
Yeah, a population.
What we have done, you'll find that, as I say, investigations has gone to, to workstations, but we have additional, a couple of additional workstations for growth there. As we look at things like your patrol lockers and those kinds of things, there are additional lockers for growth in your police and your patrol there. As we look at the clerks' workstations, there is a growth for an additional work, you know, additional clerk there, over in your court work clerks, there's growth, room for an additional growth there. We've tried to provide for those additional spaces, but in a prudent manner. And particularly in the areas where it's very difficult to grow, it's, uh, you know, you can, it's very difficult to add on to the building, to add one more workstation in an area.
Right.
It doesn't, doesn't work that way, so we, we've tried to work that way.
And this has been in consultation with the chiefs?
Very heavily. We've, uh, it's happened in each of the meetings, it's happened, we've been meeting biweekly and, and then also communicating with them, with each of the chiefs back and forth each time we make revisions. So I think, uh, putting words in your mouth, am I chief or Chief Tom, Chief Thomas?
So with the modifications, you still, I mean, it's going to be tight, but you anticipate that you'll be able to accommodate some of that growth to be able to handle the future needs of the city?
Yep.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for Jim? Questions?
We did, I, I didn't want to, I had to go through my fear, so there are some pretty things to look at. These are some of the sample finish boards that we've been working, presenting to your, to your committee here just recently, as we start to go down. We're, we're trying very hard to be very prudent with these finishes. They're not anything exotic, they're not anything non-imported finishes or anything like that, but they're durable finishes. They're, uh, we're looking at, uh, as I say, readily available and, and easy to maintain finishes throughout, and, uh, wanted to give you an idea as to kind of what we're trying to do.
That's fantastic. Can you flip those around so during the rest of the meeting, the public can see them? Thank you. Yeah, just wherever we have a space to lean it against. Thank you. Did you have more then, Jim?
No.
Okay. Who's, who's next?
Big D will be next.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
So as I, like I said briefly, we're, we're planning to start construction first part of December. Uh, as Jim indicated, we would, should have the balance of the documents mid-December, which would put us in a position to have the final project GMP prepared by first part of the year, uh, starting soon thereafter on signing up contracts for all the remaining subcontractors and getting going. Schedule-wise, we're looking at, um, this is a preliminary schedule at this point until we get all the subcontractors on board and we can talk about manpower and their availability. Uh, we won't have a final schedule, but right now, we're looking at finishing, we're going to start with the fire station. Obviously, that's the priority with them being in a temporary location, to get that finished first, so that will be where we'll start. And we anticipate that being completed by the end of October of next year, if not sooner. Uh, again, that'll be dependent upon the subcontractors that are brought on board. And our preliminary schedule puts the public safety building, um, done probably in February of the following year, so they, there's a little bit of a lag between the two. The bigger building obviously takes longer. Um, what else? Did, did I cover everything you want to ask me?
Yeah, uh, well, I think you talked about the bidding process and where we're at, and then schedule, those were the two things.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is availability like? I know construction is kind of, and what is, has there been a big increase in material and the cost of materials?
Uh, the biggest problem we're dealing with is availability of manpower for sure. Subs, uh, just being too busy and not interested, but, uh, we're, we're able to get interest, a lot of, a lot of subcontractors, you know, they prioritize who they work for, and it's one of the benefits of hiring, hiring a big contractor like Big D. We have a tremendous amount of influence in getting bids, and we're leveraging that to make sure we get plenty of competitive bids for this project, to make sure we get a good deal.
Other questions?
I had a question about whether, and this may be one Tina or Scott could speak to too, but I'm curious, in, in the timeline, what actions are done by the, the council, come before the council, happen at the council level? Do we approve the bids that come out? What steps do we need to be involved in?
I'm not quite sure, maybe it...
I, I don't think so. I think the contract is with Big D, and so as they do their subcontractor contracts, we wouldn't be approving those. I don't, I don't think the council's going to be involved in any of the subcontracting.
Sure. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Marty, can you disconnect?
Now, remember, his has trouble staying connected, so you might want to pinch-hit Want to start speaking?
I can, but I, I want to show you what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor and Council, we've been working on this project for a while. We've been working with our general contractor, with our architect, and I would just like to say about the CMGC process of having them both in the room as we meet has been very wonderful to streamline, communicate, make sure we're all on the same page, and hopefully saving us some money, uh, when it comes to the overall product, um, as far as we're concerned. What I'm going to show you is numbers from about 10 days ago. Uh, again, these are construction estimates, and so until we actually get bids, then we will have hard numbers that we can bring back and say, this is exactly where we're at. All right, we'll get connected here. Uh, and so, these numbers are what they are. They could change tomorrow as we go, and we're bidding the structural and the, you know, the earthwork package, and we get some hard numbers here in about a week, then we'll turn around and plug those in, and we'll recalculate where we're at. Uh, so as, that's just, uh, just an understanding that there is still, uh, a lot of moving parts. Now, these are, these estimates are done in a sense that, I mean, we have a decent idea as to where we're at. I think people can see that. This is, uh, given to us by Big D on, on the building, and if you look at, uh, the first, one through 15, you see on the, the sub number there says construction costs, and you go to the far right. Uh, so on top of that, you can see that our building is just over 50,000 square feet. The construction costs, which I would, which we deem the sticks and bricks, which is what we've talked about in the past, is what the sticks and bricks will cost. Uh, right now, it's estimated at $10,173,766. Below that are the general conditions that come with the general contractor, and then also some of the, so we have a liability, a general liability insurance on the building. We have a builder's risk insurance, and then we also have a weather allowance, uh, because we are starting construction, uh, into the winter season, uh, so we do have some contingency money as far as that's concerned. And then on the bottom, we have the contractor's contingency that Big D carries, and then also what their fee is. Um, so you, if you look at that $11,716,262 number, that's going to carry into my next Okay, so that $11,716,621 is that number right there, which is the construction costs, sticks and bricks, the general conditions, and then the insurance allowances, contractor fees and contingency. So that's, just so you can understand where this number here came from. On the top side of this is the available project funds. So we have a general obligation bond. Uh, now, the bond is for 9.5 million, but there's closing costs and other things that we took out of the bond proceeds, so the actual money available to the building is We have some impact fee funds, uh, that we've been collecting over the years that are available at about $950,000. And then we have a piece of surplus property, uh, just off of PG Boulevard and 1300 West, uh, that we bought with, uh, Public Safety Impact Fee Funds years ago, and we have that currently for sale. And the proceeds of that sale of property will go towards this building. And just so the council understands, if we get to the point where we need this money and we still have not sold that property, the intent of what we will do is we will have the general fund, um, reserves buy this piece of property to free up the cash to go into the project. Then the general fund will own that piece of property, so that when it gets sold, then the general fund reserves can be reimbursed. Does anyone understand that? That's a, go ahead, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and so, we have what I call the additional city funds potentially available at $400,000, and I'll get into that in, in my next, uh, slide to show you what that means. This is just amazing to me. We have just under $2 million in donations to the city for this building. Without the $2 million, I don't, we could do this project, but it, it probably almost wouldn't be worth our time, because it would not be a facility that would be able to accommodate where we're at as a community. Uh, we have, uh, most of this cash, most of the cash transaction of the donation is in the city coffers. Um, we do have a large, uh, one, one large donor, um, that we're still working with on, uh, making that transaction happen, which will probably happen over the next few months. For some, we're working with tax implications, some want their donation to count on this tax year, and others want it to count on next tax year, so we're, we're trying to accommodate those donors to make sure that they can take advantage tax-wise on their donations. So that's incredibly generous of our community to step up and do that. So the total available project funds we have at this point are $13,186,000. We have an allowance for relocation of our fire department and community development at about $130,000. We also have the cost of our demolition, which we're still tabulating what that final number is, but that's pretty close to the 150. So that was nice that we were able to meet that budget. On the bottom side of this are, um, I'll come back to the contingency, but we have our architectural fee, we have what we call FFNA furnitures, furnishings, fixture and equipment, um, so that's going to go for the chairs, uh, couches, desks, uh, things like that that will be in the building. Uh, we have a design fee that's attached with that. We do have a designer that's helping us make sure that we're, have something that's going to look nice and is going to accommodate what the building looks. Uh, we have geotechnical, uh, stuff that we're doing. We have a budget and site survey. I mean, that's been completed and paid for. Uh, we have some testing at $58,000. Uh, and so, when you add up these soft costs here, that's another 1.6 million, 68. And so you add that all together, our project cost is $13,677,368. So where we are today is in a deficit of about $490,000 in regards to fully funding the project. So there's two numbers I'm going to go into more detail on. One is this $400,000, and the other is going to be this $499,82. Okay, so this current commitment, commitment is currently built into our budget. This is what we call our current funding gap. So out of this $400,000 of how that can be funded, um, we have a capital project that we funded for $100,000, which was to do a parking lot out here for this building, that at this point, um, I am recommending that we hold off on that project and we earmark this money for the building. We also have a capital fund balance of $130,000 that we could put towards this. And then our revenue over expenditure from our budget we just completed, our 2017 budget was $440,000. So this number right here is usually the number we use for our capital projects for all of our departments going forward for the next year. Um, at this point, the recommendation is that we sit on this and we see, uh, once we get through the bid numbers and we get more, more of that information, to see if, if we're going to need to use this money. Now, in my opinion, we're going to need to use this money. Uh, so the recommendation right now is to not to, to fund other capital projects at this point for other departments and hold on to this for the public safety building. So if you add all these numbers up and compare it to the $400,000 commitment that's currently built into the budget, there's $270,000 left over, which I've rolled over to here as a carryover. So if we take our current funding gap at 490, and if we rolled that 270 over to here, uh, I think this was alluded to, our audiovisual, we just got the numbers, I think, two days ago, we have slashed 40,000 out of that budget. So part, in our new facility, our intent was to have, uh, some nice display units set up in the community room for council meetings, uh, so that we could have, uh, so the residents that are watching would be able to see what's going on. Now, we're still going to accomplish that. One of the big trade-offs is that we were looking at having a system for streaming that would have a three-camera system, so that we had a camera on the speaker, we had a camera on the council, and we had a camera on the display. That's all gone away. There's, there's not money in the budget to do that. So the, the places where we have cut, um, have been things that don't compromise the square footage. And so... And so, one of the things that does not compromise the square footage is what audiovisual equipment we bring. So we'll bring over our camera, our current streaming process, we'll bring over our projector. So there was new projectors that were set up in this budget. We've eliminated those, and that's how we'll do business. Now, everything is going to be wired, but when that money becomes available for us to enhance our streaming abilities or other audiovisual things, then we'll be able to bring that back into play. But at this point, with where we are in our current budget situation, it's, right now, today, it doesn't look like the money's there to be able to do that. We have one other capital project that is funded for this current year that there could be fifty thousand dollars or a portion of that left over. So I don't, I put that number in there. If that money becomes available, the recommendation would be is that we move it into the building. So there are still donations. We are getting ready to do a citywide campaign seeking donations. We have the honorary colonels that work, that are part of our city, that are a group of individuals that have a care for public safety in our city. And they are working on setting up, the honorary colonels is a 501(c)(3), meaning if you donate to the honorary colonels, you get a tax, it counts as a charitable donation on your taxes. We will be setting it up so that individuals in our community can donate money to the honorary colonels, which will in turn be transferred over to the city for the building. And we're working, we're pretty close. We have a letter that's near drafted that we're going to be sending out to everyone. We're working on a website right now. We have a resident by the name of Jeremy Hall who's putting a website together so that we can point people to the website. So it would be set up as a merchant account, so they could enter a credit card number, they could make a donation, they receive a receipt for their tax purposes. And then we have a little bit of what I would call a donor structure. So we're working on, we, you know, we have some donors that are over a hundred thousand. So if we have donors that have contributed over a hundred thousand, there's a specific way we're going to recognize them in the building. So we have another wall set aside called what we're calling the donor wall. And then we have others that have donated between five thousand and a hundred thousand. We'd like to have something specific for them that points them out. And then we're looking at anybody that donates over a hundred dollars, up to five thousand, there would be another sort of recognition that will be in the building. So if there's people that are visiting the building in five years, they could go to the donor wall and see who has helped contribute to this. So we're getting pretty close to kicking that campaign off. And I didn't put a number in there. I don't know what that number's going to be, but that is something that will be put towards the building. Another potential revenue source is our current year budget, our revenue over expenditure, which in seventeen was four hundred and forty thousand. If we have a similar year to seventeen, there could be another four hundred and forty thousand available. Right now, our funding gap is, if all of these come into play, would be a hundred and thirty thousand. So we might have to use some of that in order to fully make sure the building is taken care of. We also have, and this is one of those items that we would consider, that we would recommend to use the council, if for some reason these things fall short, we do have a two-point three million dollar general fund reserve account. And that money is, could be used for a one-time operation, a one-time expense. We don't use it for operations because operations are ongoing expenses, but that is another potential source. Also, whoops, I was going to bring this up, last slide, but let me pull it back up. Yeah, Mayor, just one more slide. We are carrying a five percent contingency, so five hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. Talking with our contractor and our architect, generally speaking, that is going to cover unknown costs that we don't see today. So some projects might come in slightly under budget, and so some of that contingency might come back to the city. If it does, it would go towards that one hundred and thirty thousand dollar gap. So these are just areas where there are monies that are out there that depending on, I mean, so much is going to depend on where we're at after these things are bid. I know the contractors are nervous, I'm nervous, our owners committee's nervous, the, as much construction that's going on in our area, that there are concerns about what that price is going to be. And we'll know, gosh, we'll know our footings and foundation package here soon, our structural package, and then we'll, you know, once we bid the rest of the building, then we'll sit down and see exactly where we're at. So with that, I think, let me double check my notes. Oh, one other thing, and we sort of talked about this, that some of the things that we did eliminate out of the building, again, as we looked at things where we were not sacrificing square footage, the one square footage sacrificed was that we went from six base to five base. The long-term impact of that is something that will probably be, have to be figured out to a point when we're getting close to build out whether we can handle all of our equipment. So five bay, ideally six, where they're giving us a comfort. Five maybe takes some of that comfort away, but ultimately, years from now, and this is, this might go for a couple of things we're talking about, somebody else is going to have to deal with that. Because right now, the money's just not there for us to say, we're going to do that. We did have a secondary access for the fire department. If you remember when, I think the last time the architect presented, we had a second access coming kind of through the, what was that, the east side of the park?
West.
The west side of the building and east side of the park, yeah. So that right now is, we've taken that out of the budget. Again, that is something that we could add later if we choose to. We also had the fence around the secure parking. We've talked about that. That's been taken out of the budget. So we'll have the parking there, but we will not have the fence that would deem it secure. Right now, it'll just be a parking lot. And one of the other things is, at one point, we had a restroom attached to the west side of the police and courts building that was going to accommodate the downtown park, a new restroom. If you've been into the current restroom of the downtown park, it's in bad shape. That has been eliminated as well from what we're doing.
Is there, is there opportunity for something to be built where that can be added on in the future?
Yeah, so it's going to be plumbed. So it will be plumbed, and if we add that on, they can put it right there on that spot. So a lot of what we've done is, kind of future planning-wise, is whether it's the plumbing, whether it's the wiring, or whatever we're doing, so that when the funds become available to add that, we'll have that infrastructure pretty much in place, so that we don't have to go tearing up walls and things like that in order to accommodate that. I think that covers all of it. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Okay, was there somebody else?
Yeah, I would like Guy Fugel and Dave Holdaway of our owners committee to talk about, they are the citizen representatives, they can give their perspectives on where we're at and what we're doing, and we'll turn it over to them. I don't know if Guy or Dave wants to start, but...
Dave, go ahead. Back you up. Well, I appreciate this opportunity. I wonder if I could beg the indulgence of the council, because I would like, in addition to making this report that Scott wanted me to do, to make some general observations, if that's okay. And in order to do that, and to say what I had in mind, I've got it all written down, so I don't have to depend on my memory. I have had the opportunity of being involved in the planning of the Pleasant Grove Public Safety Facilities for several years. I must admit that I got involved partially because I was concerned with the somewhat toxic attitudes that had been emerging in the community relating these proposed new buildings. I was hopeful that I could provide some help in finding practical and reasonable solutions for getting these facilities built. Unfortunately, it's become obvious to me that the bond was, that was eventually approved by the voters would not provide enough funds to provide for all the needs being requested by the city administration and staff, and Scott's reviewed all that with you. Serving as an owners representative on the billing committee has given me an opportunity to tackle these practical issues head-on. I'm pleased to support the proposed design of the new public safety facilities. It represents what I consider the best option, given the practical needs and available funding. When I was involved in the construction and renovation of buildings in the Alpine School District, it became clear to me that building on the cheap was shortsighted and not in the best interest of taxpayers' money. Quality material and construction and innovative ideas cost more in the short term, but I was convinced that the longer building life and lower maintenance costs made more economic sense in the long run. Intangible benefits are hard to measure, but I believe that the quality and appearance of the new buildings we're going to be building will result in better employee efficiency and morale, and will be a source of community pride. "I was recently approached by a citizen who felt that the new buildings were not necessary and that we could get by with a few Quonset huts." That's a direct quote. "I want to compliment the team of PRC architects, Big D Construction, and all of the city staff. We have wrestled with the funding versus needs issues, and I've been impressed with the results that have been achieved. We have been consistently looking for ways to trim costs and at the same time produce a quality and functional product. For example, about five thousand square feet of floor space has been limited, eliminated from the original proposals, and other value engineering measures have reduced costs. One list of changes proposed by the architect and construction manager resulted in over nine hundred thousand dollars in cost savings without significantly reducing the functionality of the buildings. A few months ago, Mayor Downs met with our committee and addressed the funding issue. He said that he felt that we could make out most of the shortfall through private donations. I admire his foresight and faith in the community. It's been gratifying to me to see how people have responded to the plea for donations to bridge the gap between the bonded amount and the funds needed to complete the buildings, including construction costs, architect fees, inspection, testing, furniture, et cetera. These contributions will fund almost twenty percent of the construction costs. I think that the response has been nothing short of amazing. It tells me that in spite of all the criticism and negativism these projects have generated, there are those in the community who can see beyond all the rhetoric and are willing to make significant contributions. This generosity is not unusual in our community. The building that we are meeting in tonight was funded partially by voluntary contributions. Unfortunately, our community is developing a reputation of being divided and in conflict over several issues. Now is a good time to put this behind us, to put behind us petty differences and work toward unifying and building our community." And David, were you asked to have a slide ready for me?
I've got the slide for you.
Okay, is it ready to go up? I want to thank Sid Lamond for this, this is her picture, but it was my idea to present this, not Guy's and not hers. This is, should be the face of politics and our attitude in Pleasant Grove City. And I'm not going to say a lot about this picture because I think it's, it tells a thousand words of how two good, honest, capable people ran what I thought were outstanding campaigns and had the attitude of being classy and just being good enough people, the guy can put his arm around Sid and say, hey, good job. Got to get back where I was. Okay. A lump came to my throat when I saw the wrecked building adorned in bonding at Strawberry Days as we said goodbye to the grand old lady. I walked through the building and wrote my name on the wall. I remember all the ballgames, dances, and other events I attended in the building over the years, and was honestly sad to see it go. Now, as I visit this side of the buildings, which are only now a memory, I don't think so much of the past as the future. It is exciting to contemplate what will replace them, and I hope that the new buildings will do the old ones proud." Now, I just want to talk about some things a little off the subject here, but I think they apply. The road issue has driven a wedge into our community. Are some of our roads bad? Of course, but many are also good. This is a glass half-full and a glass half-empty issue. Look around. Nine Hundred South has just been rebuilt and looks great. Sam Att's Lane is soon to be completed. One Hundred East will be completely rebuilt next year. Many of our major roads are in good shape. Seven Hundred East, Thirteen Hundred West, most of Eleven Hundred North, Eighteen Hundred North, Twenty-Six Hundred North, North County Boulevard, Six Hundred West, Locust Avenue, Main Street, Geneva Road, Center Street, Two Hundred South, Five Hundred North, Lot or Drive, and I could go on and on. However, the road in front of my house is bad. I travel it several times a day. I have discovered how to navigate bad roads. Slow down and be patient. The city is making progress, and I'm convinced that these improvements will continue. Let's replace criticism and rancor with community concern and willingness to work together. We don't always have to agree, and we have to accept that mistakes are bound to happen, but we can try to be courteous and civil. My Pleasant Grove is not a city of social media insults and sarcastic remarks, but of citizens who come together and love their city, those who follow the flag, who built the Discovery Park, volunteer their time for Strawberry Days, help with recreation and other programs, and who help their neighbors and make, to help them make the city better. If we work together, Pleasant Grove has a bright future. We should remember what Abraham Lincoln said when tempted to criticize. "It's better to remain silent and be thought a fool than to speak and eliminate all doubt." Let's get behind the president's elected officials and those who will take office in January. They deserve our support, and I'm sure they will try to listen to their constituents and make good decisions. We can choose to be a critic or a concerned citizen. There's a difference. A concerned citizen is motivated by a desire for a better community and is willing to step up and support good causes. This doesn't mean that he or she will agree to all decisions made by city administration and will be respectful and civil in expressing differences and suggestions. I like what Teddy Roosevelt said over a hundred years ago. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who was actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again because there's no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory or defeat." Let's jump into the arena and share some Pleasant Grove generosity and donate where we can to these projects. Hopefully, when we've completed and unveiled and have added the public, people will say, this was a good idea. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to second Mayor Holdaway's motion there. I agree with him totally on everything he touched on. You know, I just want to touch on, we have the right contractor, we have the right architect on the job, and we're just, gets up and coming out of the ground, and we'll all be proud of it. You know, I'm a little worried about the audiovisual end of it, you know, we kept slashing it out, but you know, I guess we can always go back to an overhead projector and a grease pen, so anyway, that's where we came from. We have to think, you have to worry about that if the bulb burns out. But anyway, but thank you, and we look forward to this going forward, and I appreciate David and his good words and all he does and the knowledge he brings to our committee. By all the many projects, I saw him complete on the school district, and he's got quite a mind, and we've been a good team. Thank you.
Scott, was there anything else you wanted to cover on that?
No, I couldn't...
No, that covers it.
Okay. Well done. Thank you for all your work, and we look forward to the continued work that you're doing. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 11B. This is a discussion and direction for Valley Vista Trail, excuse me, Valley Vista Phase Two project. Dionne?
Mayor and Council, I'm kind of excited to be here tonight. The Valley Vista Trail system has been a great success for our city and our community. I'd just like to give you a little recap on Phase One. Currently, we're under budget, about $35,000 in the impact fee account. This is due to over 2,000-plus volunteer hours installing most of the amenities and completing the majority of the trail maintenance. An example of this is Trail Day 2017, where there were over 300 hours of volunteers completing multiple task items. Maintenance from the city staff has been very minimal. Emptying trash cans, removing banners and signs, occasional trail closure due to wet conditions, and organization of tours and supplies for service projects. The response from the community and visitors have been very impressive. We've seen all types of trail users, of all ages. Everyone who has used the trail have been very complimentary on what a great and professional trail system it is. At the opening coming in May, the city received a generous donation of $10,000 from Lizard Skins and Tepanoga Cyclops for the trail system. In September, the city received another very generous anonymous donation for $140,000 for Phase Two. It's brought us to tonight. I'm looking for council direction to move forward with Phase Two. As, we'd like to start the design work, working with the landowners, applications for the permits, approvals and cost estimates for constructions, options and amenities. And again, excited to have the donation of that caliber come in and help us out on this project. Any questions?
Yes, Dionne, what was the estimate for Phase Two without the donation?
I haven't really broken it down that far. Until we get in with the landowners and agreements, I'm not certain of what amenities they'll request for those agreements, so I, I mean, I have a square footage or a linear footage, but I'd hate to say it right now until we have those.
When we have that, can you come back?
Almost definitely. We'll come back to you.
I won't be here, but you could come back and say, "This is what we originally budgeted. This is how much was donated. Here's how much time was donated, and this is what it actually cost."
Before we start any of that, Mayor, we'll bring a budget back to the council for approval before we do.
Right. Thank you.
I would like to move forward with the getting more numbers and getting, you know, I mean, we have this donation, and I don't know if we've ever received a donation specifically for a park, and maybe we have in Pleasant Grove of this size, and so I think he wants, whoever it is, I don't know if he or she, I'm just, they want us to move forward, and I would like to enter into doing that. This is why they've offered that money and those resources, and I think we need to take advantage of the generosity and do everything we can to honor what they're asking us to do.
And that, and those donations, that's, you know, that can definitely help with the offset, well, it would cover the design fees and those types of things, definitely. And that's kind of why we want to get into it a little more so we can see where we're at, what the overall cost would be.
So you're asking tonight to move forward to explore the cost of Phase Two?
Correct. Then we'd come back with some good figures.
I do have a question. Do we have any other funds in the impact? I'm assuming that legally we can use the $35,000 that was under budget and the $10,000 that was donated.
So $10,000 was donated specifically for the trail, and at the time when we get numbers put together, I think that's when, if we needed those additional funds from the impact fees, we'd come and request those funds to be allotted to Phase Two.
So to be clear, you're saying that the next time you come forward, assuming the council approves it, gives you direction, you'll come back with what that budget is and minus the donations, and then here's what the net will be?
Correct. There's going to be fees, just like with Phase One, with the county and metro, and until we really get into the design and have some good schematic and engineering work done for them, then they can set those figures. But until then, I'm not going to have a specific on the budget.
That makes sense. Other questions for Dionne?
Yeah, do you have any ideas, Dionne, about what features Phase Two might include? Is it just more linear feet of trail, or are there specific features that we're hoping to see?
More linear foot. It's very, so Phase One is loops and loops and loops and a lot of cross connections and junctions and those types of things, where Phase Two is more just a single track, quarter mile, half a mile, a mile of trail that just goes out and back, and so there's not as many amenities, you know, a kiosk probably at the Cedar Hills Trailhead, something like that, as we look into it. Just a lot less currently, at least with the plans that, with our concept that we have, a lot less marker signs, those types of things. Again, until we talk with the property owners, we don't know if there's any, you know, desires that they would have, post-trail fence, those types of things.
Thanks. Dionne, I imagine you have a lot of people that have, are actually involved in volunteering with the design and with the work like we did last time, Jason and the crew that you had, but I just want to be clear that the responsibility for the budget and moving forward is the responsibility of the city.
Correct. And actually, Phase Two is done with Phase One. We just, you know, decreased the project. So as far as the design, the conceptual design, that's all been done.
Okay.
Now it's feet on the ground and get things really looked at, so.
Other questions for Dionne? Okay, Council, I think we've heard from Sid. Do any of the others, how do you feel about directing staff to move forward on fleshing out the rest of this?
Absolutely.
Move forward.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason not to get some numbers and figure out what it might cost.
So I think, I think your council is 100% behind you. That was unanimous on all their parts. So please continue. Thank you.
We'll be back.
And thanks to all of you that are volunteering to help. We really appreciate it. This would not exist without you. Okay. Thanks, Dionne.
Thanks, Jason and your crew.
Okay, the next one is neighborhood and staff business, and I'm going to start. As many of you know, the city published a newsletter this last month, it was for the month of November, and I wrote an article that was published on the front page of that newsletter. This is the same information that I gave to Brian Thompson, the Utah County Clerk Auditor. And I want to be clear of this because I think there are lots of stories floating around and lots of people who think they understand intent and can read other people's minds. I want to be clear about what happened. Where it goes from there is completely up to the auditor and your own judgments. This is the summary. "I wrote an article for the Daily Herald, which was republished as the front page article for the city newsletter. The article clearly advocated citizens to vote against Prop Three on the November ballot. Election law on advocating did not cross my mind in mid-October. This was my oversight, as the letter should have been modified to not advocate for or against the proposition." Now, if you care, here are the circumstances surrounding this. I'll just tell you. "I wrote this letter and delivered it on the 13th of October. It was to be published on the 15th, which is a Sunday, and I had surgery scheduled for Monday. When I was asked to write this article and turn it in, write an article and turn it in for the November newsletter, I did not have time to write a new article. The person who asked me to submit it said, 'The one that was supposed to write the article had not been able to do so, could I submit something?'" And I said, "I do not have time to write another one. Here is what I have. You can modify it to fit. Just try to maintain the intent." And that's important. You just ought to know that upfront. Again, not thinking about what should and should not be published in the city newsletter article. So the point is, I did write an article. It did advocate against Prop Three. It was published on the city newsletter, and it did use public resources to broadcast that message to the citizens. That is wrong. It's against state law, and that's on me, and I accept that. And there is no one in the city that is responsible for collusion, encouraging, recommending, or trying to make that go forward. That's the sum total of it. You can take that and do with it what you will. I apologize for having made that mistake." Thank you. Okay, let's move to staff business. Daniel?
I'm here.
Marty?
We've finished, I think, a very successful construction season. We've got things paved on 7th South and then also 9th South and all of the other projects we're trying to tie up with asphalt. Asphalt probably won't be available after this week, so we're glad that all kind of worked out, and we're looking, in the process of next year's projects, have a good five or six other projects under design right now moving forward, so have another busy construction season next year.
Thank you. Kathy? Scott?
Nothing.
Tina?
Just to let you know that we have hired another full-time prosecutor. His name's Michael Scott. He comes to us from West Jordan. He's got a number of years of experience as a justice court prosecutor, and he's very excited to be here. I'll have him come at a later date and introduce himself, but just let you know that position's been filled.
And he watches 48 movies a month.
Yes, yes. His favorite thing is Disneyland, and he watches a lot of movies. That's all I know.
There you go. I'll take him any day. Lynn, he's giving you competition. David?
Just a simple reminder about tomorrow, the North County Summit hosted by the Chambers, meaning the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber, as well as the American Fork area and the Lehigh area, in a joint effort. I know that it is going to be a great event. This is the fourth annual and hosted here at DoTERRA here in Pleasant Grove, but all of the businesses from North Utah County are coming. It's a half-day event, has breakfast and lunch, and speakers in between, and it's really highlighting Pleasant Grove in a lot of ways. So I know that invitations and things have already been out, but just a reminder that that's tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Sherry?
Thank you all for your participation in the Veterans Day program. It was nice. Also, they have cut the wall to take out the concrete, and we'll be doing that over the next day or two, so we're seeing progress again. And I just, I'm filling out the state report that I fill out annually, where we turn in statistics, and a statistic I've never mentioned before that I think is interesting is number of times patrons use the wireless network, and it was six, almost 6,000 times last year. So a lot of people just come in to do a little surfing. Library is useful for, in a lot of ways.
That's very good. Dave?
Back in the middle of October, California experienced some devastating fires. Literally thousands of homes were lost and billions of dollars of loss were reported. During the crescendo of all that, California put out a call to Utah asking for 29 or more fire apparatus to go down and help protect the structures that were threatened. We turned to our guys. We had four people step up, including Dionne, and we put them on an engine and in a caravan of 30 other fire apparatus from all across the state and sent them down to California. They spent about a week down there, and I think they all had a good experience, but one of the things that's been most exciting for me, and it's something that I've never experienced before in my life, is I've received well over a dozen thank you cards from people in California. We even got a couple from elementary schools with actual photos.
That's awesome.
Each one had a handwritten note or something similar. This particular one said, "There are not enough words to express our deep gratitude. You are our heroes. We will never forget what you did for us." Pretty touching. I'll meet in Salt Lake tomorrow with the state EMAC people, who are the people that set up this service, and we'll work out the rest of the funding where California will reimburse us for our costs.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Mike?
Yeah, I've spoken to you previously about our involvement with the Attorney General's Office and the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. We manage the north end of Utah County, and they give us a fairly substantial grant award to do that. Just recently, we made a decision to use some of that grant money to buy a piece of equipment that we've wanted for quite a long time, and it's what's called a CVSA. It's a computerized voice stress analysis. So we sent a couple with the purchase of the equipment. The grant reimbursed that and also reimbursed the training of two certified detectives to operate that piece of equipment. So I tell you that because it's pretty cool what happened. They went to the training, and the week after they got back, the, within a couple days of getting back, they were able to bring a suspect in on a rape case. And the rape case is something that the victim sat on and lived with for seven years, never reported it for seven years. Reported it to us. We have, we have a suspect, interviewed the suspect, and of course, they didn't admit to anything, and it's pretty hard to do much on a seven-year-old case. This suspect had actually been convicted of a couple other cases, and as part of the sentencing had went through some polygraph testing and had never divulged that this other incident had happened. Well, we were able to bring in this suspect and put him on the CVSA, and he failed it miserably, and as a result of that, actually confessed to the rape of this woman who has lived with this for seven years. And when we reached out to her and let her know that he would be charged, that he's in jail and will be charged with her rape, she was beyond words and just thought it was something that would never, ever, that she would never, ever see justice for. So with that, I think every dime that we spent on this tool has proven its value with just that one case, just an amazing case within the first week that we received it.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Dionne?
I'm not sure if we meet again before the Christmas tree lighting, but that'll be November 27th, 6 o'clock in downtown park.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all.
Ben?
I did want to thank Sherry and our firefighters and police officers and our rec department for that event on Saturday. It was excellent. It was an honor to be involved with it, and it was a really great program. Thanks, and look forward to the program tomorrow. I think that'll be very good, too. Thanks, Dave. That's all I have.
Lynn?
Thank you for your courage.
Thank you. Sid? Nothing. Eric?
I'm good.
Diana?
Yeah, I'm going to say something. You know, I think it's very interesting tonight. I'm very grateful for Mayor Holdaway's message. I think it's also very interesting tonight that we've talked about a lot of money being donated to our city. One time somebody said to me, "Most cities ask for their, to their generous, donate, generous citizens to, for the cherry on top," and we were asking for sticks and pricks. I'm just so impressed with very, very good citizens, anonymous and not... I'm just so impressed with very, very good citizens, anonymous and not, that have just donated to help. I also think it's very interesting that we all have about the same 16 hours in a day, and I see a lot of people doing really, really good things with their 16 hours. I see a lot of other people spending a lot of time saying really bad things on social media. It takes time. It takes time to do all the research to say all those mean things. But I'm just very impressed with people that are spending their 16 hours doing really good things for our city.
Thank you. We do have two plans, is that right? Just one? Please make sure you sign it before we leave. There will be a special meeting of the city council next week to canvass the election. That'll be the only agenda item.
Mayor, that's at 5:00 instead of 6:00?
So 5:00, not 6:00. If you come at 5:05, you will miss it. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, make the motion that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.